Call this meeting of Lima City Council to order. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the invocation by Councilor Gordon, followed by the pleasurable agents.
Father in heaven, we come to you in Jesus' most precious name. We ask that you be with us tonight as we make decisions for our constituents and for the city of Lima, and that we do our best. I also ask that you give an extra blessing to two people that are having some health problems, our fellow councillor Jesse Low and Reverend Horton, ask that you be with them in their time. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk call the roll.
Councilor Gordon.
Here.
Councilor McLean.
Here.
Councilor Low.
Councilor Crayer.
Here.
Councilor Adams.
Here.
Councilor Glenn.
Here.
Councilor Miles.
Here.
And Councilor Nixon.
Here. We have two public hearings scheduled this evening. The first is on the C-.
Add-on.
No, we have add-ons.
Mr. President, we need to add Communication Number 13 to our agenda. We also need to add to privilege of the floor, Leela Johnson.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to add Communication 13 to our agenda and also Leela Johnson, under privilege of the floor. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, sign the five as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Now we've got two public hearings. The first is the CDBG public hearing, number three. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the proposed CDBG allocation, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to come forward and address the CDBG allocations, please come forward and state your name for the record. Third and final call, if there's anybody in the audience that would like to address the issue of CDBG allocations, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Mr. President, if I could request Steve Cleaves to come up and speak on some action being proposed.
Thank you, Ms. Adams and members of council. I did put in your boxes and in your email accounts a summary of the status of the general funds, spending that we're going to have to cover in the coming medium term, let's say a three to five-year period. I don't know if you still have that exhibit with you. I could pass out a copy if you need one. The first couple of slides are just a quick summary of the activity in the block grant program. It's been reduced quite substantially since about the year 2000, when it was about $2 million. During the last four or five years, it's been between $1 million and $1,200,000. And also in the period, the activity has picked up a lot because of all of the grant activity, which the city has pursued and is now responsible for reporting on. So that's just a quick summary. I'm sure that Susan is going to cover that in a lot more detail. The point I want to bring out is that the general fund has absorbed a lot of the activity that was funded previously by the block grant program. There are certain activities that are essential, and if we can't get the money out of the block grant, we really have to take it out of the general fund. We've been doing that in a measured process in the last few years. Probably the biggest hit has been in the streets area. At one time, we were putting, on the fourth slide, on the second page, almost $1 million. Actually, we did in some years, so into the streets program, out of the block grant program. And that allowed that money to be leveraged. So, you know, if we put in a million, we could end up with maybe $5 billion in total street activity due to the grants that we could attract. So while that allocation has been reduced to about $200,000 in recent years, we've still kicked in the extra money out of the general fund to allow that leveraging to continue. But that has been an increased draw on our general fund cash of about $700,000 a year from that peak period. On the next slide, some of the other activities. We have eliminated some slots in the department responsible for administering those funds. They've reduced their manpower from about 16 to nine, which is about a 44% reduction. Meanwhile, although the funds have been cut, all that activity, all the grant activity still requires heavy reporting responsibilities. Matter of fact, HUD has just continually picked up the bureaucratic red tape, basically, that you have to go through to accept and administer those funds. Some of that money that's spent requires 10, 15 years of follow-up reports. Some of it annually, some of it yearly, and increasingly, it's quarterly. So the reporting requirements have really skyrocketed. What I really want to stress, though, is the increased costs that the general fund has undertaken in recent years due to the financial condition of the city coming back. We're really in pretty good shape. We're in better than pretty good shape. So we've been quite aggressive in hiring and in our capital expenditures in the last two, three years. You know, it's good to be in strong fiscal shape for a city. It doesn't always occur, particularly in this region and in this part of the state. And it's good to be a little bit exuberant about that. But I'd just like to remind everyone that Alan Greenspan, at one time, talked about exuberance, getting the dangers of it getting just a little bit too exuberant. So I just wanted to highlight the fact that although we have an $8 million cash balance, we've got $2 million of additional operating costs facing us in the coming years. We also have capital requirements of about $9 million, of about $1 million for a total of, between operating and capital, it's almost $9 million. Now, the capital, we're not going to spend all cash for that. We're going to borrow an appropriate share of that. But we still have to pay that back. And the average life of those capital assets would probably be somewhere around 10 years. Vehicles are five, and buildings, 20, 25, something like that. So we do have quite a challenge going forward sustaining what we're about right now. So my only point, main point of addressing you at this time is to just tap a little gently on those brakes and to carefully consider additional cost shifting into the general fund. Do you have any questions or the glad answer?
Mr. President.
Councilor Glenn.
Steve, you know, you have been doing a good job over the years, and I know when you put this out here, you did your homework on it. Because over the years, you have got us out of different situations. I commend you for that. And when you say, "Watch how we pull money out here," you're saying that some of the funding that we're going to want to put in general fund, watch what we do on that, that what you're talking about?
I just, I want to caution you. You know, we have a budget process every year, and that's the time when we really look at the long-term impact of what we're going to add into the general fund, particularly manpower and capital now, because we have a big catch-up on the capital side. We've made really substantial progress in the last three to five years on the capital side, but we still have quite a ways to go. So I'm just, when we make those plans at the start of the year, and then during the year, things happen that weren't anticipated, that's going to probably mean some of the things we thought we were going to do are going to be pushed off or possibly canceled. I don't know what those would be, but we're going to eventually get to that point. So I'm just, I just want everybody to be aware of that.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Glenn. Any other questions for please? Susan?
Thank you. I've already given several presentations, so I'm not intending to do that and take up a lot more time, but I do have an updated sheet for you. It has, it is dated at the top because they're starting to look similar. I understand how that is. This one reflects. Go back to the mic here in a minute.
I'll just pick you.
This reflects a recommendation that was made by the Economic and Community Development Committee, which Steve was referring to, to take the CDBG admin cost and Neighborhood Assistance Program and fund those with general fund dollars. So we did reflect that on this sheet, but again, this is a draft. This is a draft for this final public hearing. You know, I would like to remind council members that, you know, we do need to be prepared to vote, or we're hoping that council members will vote on the proposed plan at the next meeting in order for us to keep to our timeline. We do have to have everything submitted to HUD by the middle of August, where we risk losing our funding, so that's why it is critically important that we keep on our timeline. Also, there was a request to add, to take some of the money that came from the CDBG admin and Neighborhood Assistance line items and add to the Bradfield Center. We added $10,000. I think the request was to see if we could add 20, but we do have a public services cap. We have to use estimates to figure how much we could add to not exceed that, because we have to watch our expenditures throughout the year. 15% of our expenditures plus, of the total expenditures plus program income is the maximum that we can spend on what HUD categorizes as public services, and Bradfield Center falls into that category. So we're suggesting the $10,000 additional dollars go there. And then again, we followed the recommendations of the Community and Economic Development Committee. So this, and Mr. McLean had asked that we show the previous year's totals, and so we included that on the sheet as well. And I would just like to let council members know, too, that we are having, requesting a public hearing before the next council meeting to do a substantial plan amendment that would allow us to include the Chodo project in this year's plan, so that they could get started on it right away, and we could use some of this year's dollars still toward that project. So that'll be coming up. And other than that, unless anybody has any questions, that's all I have.
Mr. President.
Councilor Adams.
So you're saying that the next meeting, July 24th, you're going to have another public hearing?
For, yes, for a substantial plan amendment. It's not, it's not part of this, but we do need to get that in the works as well, so that we can have our-
Because that affects the home dollars, isn't it?
Correct.
Okay.
That's the Chodo set-aside funding.
Right, okay.
But it's for the '16, '17 year.
Right. So, looking at this, this is what's going to be before us on the 24th to vote yes or no on, if it stands as is?
Unless anybody wants to discuss anything else tonight. Because we'll try to incorporate any recommendations, but this is, after we had the committee meeting and two public hearings, this is what-
The third public hearing.
Right. This is what has been requested to this point.
I attended the committee meeting, and as I've said to the chairman, Rebecca Crayer, not seeing a report, she's talking about another member of the committee wanted to maybe have another meeting. I mean, we've got to, you know, make a decision and move forward, because time's running out. But I'm concerned, as we've had budget hearings, and some of what was discussed in these committee meetings should have been brought to the budget hearings on certain projects. Because I know Mr. Alstro has a list of what was submitted for CDBG funding projects, and some of what they want to see done is not part of that list. So that won't happen anyway, even with the additional money. But if we would, if, I would like to see the Neighborhood Assistance, CDBG administration be reestablished to their prior numbers and refer those other projects that were brought up in the committee meeting to the Finance Committee for budgeting and to allocate money. Because those projects that were brought up in your committee won't be done even with these additional funds, because they were not part of the original submittal, and HUD, I mean, it won't fly with HUD. Where if we look at it in the Finance Committee, we could see if there's funding to where we can allocate and get it done, is what I'm looking at. I personally would like to see Bradfield, I appreciate the $10,000 increase, I would like to see that maintained, because they are original, you know, submittal, and it doesn't go outside their range of what they asked for. And if that would lower, you know, if that needs to lower the CDBG administration, $10,000, then I would move to do that, but I'd like to see the requested, well, the, I don't know how to word this, because I'm looking at so many copies of this. CDBG administration requested 211, you had a carryover of 47, and these are just round numbers. You allocated 148, so it's the 148 that this one reflects being moved to the street department. Is that correct?
No, it actually reflects the allocation plus the carryover, which is a total of 195,705.
Wow, okay.
And just as a reminder, too, that would mean that we would need to, you know, use general fund dollars for the last three months, possibly.
November, October, November, December, yeah.
If we needed it.
I didn't realize the carryovers getting transferred, too.
Yes.
Wow.
Mr. President, is that part of the process, the carryover has to follow? I mean, to me, the 47,000 was allocated in the prior year and approved by council. So why would the carryover amount be included?
That's just what I understood was requested.
From the committee.
And if council decides that you want to leave the 47 there and move the 148, that's something that you could do as well.
Yeah, to me, that prior amount has already been approved by council in the previous year, am I correct? You know, it's just merely what's left over before the new allocation period begins again. To me, it's not fair, something that's already been approved by council for it to be debated someplace else now. That's just my feeling. I believe the 48, the 47, 705 carryover should remain as is, because it's already been approved, always gone through all the required approval process.
And the same thing, if I may, Councilor Miles, are you carrying over the carryover from Neighborhood Assistance, too?
Well, Neighborhood Assistance, the total request from Autumn's budget, she budgeted, you know, the grants and training, et cetera, that she thought she would need, and her total, it would be 104,400. That was what she was asking for, for the '17 plan year.
And that's what's being transferred to Streets as well?
Yes, correct, correct.
And I don't know where you're getting the $10,000 for Bradfield, out of Administration?
$10,000 less than the total of neighborhood support and CDBG admin was moved into Streets. $10,000 of that was put into Bradfield, and all the rest just went to Streets.
I'm thinking how I want to, the word, a motion.
Let's have a little more discussion before you do a motion.
I'm waiting, yeah.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
Neighborhood Assistance, $104,400, we got five active neighborhood associations, five. Why don't we just give them 20 grand? I mean, come on, that's a lot of money to be spread around to neighborhood associations. Are they necessary? Yes. Is she necessary? She's done a great job with them, don't get me wrong. But that's a ton of money. So what is she doing in her spare time? Have we done a time study? Do we know what she does?
Oh, well, yeah, she's doing a lot more than just working with individual neighborhood associations. I mean, her job is to come up with a plan for neighborhood involvement, volunteer activities. I mean, she does work on a lot of the neighborhood events, and we are working towards starting backup neighborhood associations.
There was at one time 13. We've got very lucky to have five or six people come to each neighborhood association meetings that we have now. I go to them.
Right.
I'm actively involved. I know Rebecca has been. We don't have enough people volunteering in those neighborhood associations to justify this, period.
Well, but I think what we're trying to do is look at doing things maybe in a different way. Maybe the old way of neighborhood associations in the format that they have been in is not the best way to, you know, involve neighborhoods in activities and working together. You know, she has several programs that she's looking at instituting, you know, to help with crime patrols and things like that, too. So there are other activities-
Let me re, it's not something that's reinvented. We've already done those. We've spent time, we had a safety patrol. We've had all those things. We've had people walking the streets with the Sheriff's Department, with the explorers. We've done all those. She's not reinventing the wheel.
Well, but in all fairness, I mean, she's, her job right now is to look at ways to, you know, involve neighborhoods in a different way, so we maybe don't have all the answers on that today.
I just think that money, we can put that towards a different project. I mean, I'd rather have a street paved, truly. The neighborhood associations are important to us. She is doing a great job, but that's $104,000 that we could put somewhere else. We should put her on the books, on the general fund, and let her work for our neighborhood associations. Our neighborhood associations go out after grants all the time. They go after them, they have money to operate, they're not broke. So find out ways that we can help them, but we, $104,000, how many streets could we pay? That's where I'm coming from. This is, this is what community development is for, not for five, five neighborhoods.
Mr. President, if I may, Councilor-
Sure.
McLean. Is there involvement in the citywide pride?
Yes.
National Night Out?
Yes.
What's the other one that's coming up?
Make a Difference Day.
Make a Difference Day. I mean, those are activities that she's involved in with neighborhood associations and with general citizens that are not members of associations. She kind of coordinates, I know River Cleanup, Ottawa River Cleanup, she was heavily involved in, and was on the committee, and coordinated that and saw, you know, that from Lacka or Lacknip, you know, things were there, gloves and other things. She was there to sign people in. So there are other activities that we sponsor through that Neighborhood Assistance Program that this money is allocated for. And again, you know, I want to see streets and curbs, as we all do, but unless it's already on the list that was submitted to HUD, it's not going to be approved through moving the money. But if we move it to finance, we can probably do it that way.
I'm, Mrs., Mr. President, I'm sure that Howard didn't just request $210,000. I'm sure Howard requested probably 700 or 1,000 or 1 million. He requested a lot more than what they allocated. So moving that money is not the issue.
He requested, according to this form, 37,000.
What'd they allocate? 210? Or is, so is his requested amount?
I'm sorry, 210 was from 2016, 2016.
Yeah.
That was the previous year.
You asked for the numbers, so. And with the allocation and the reprogramming of the 290 and the allocation, he's getting 480 when he requested, well, that's with the, what, the CDBG money? Getting confused between these charts.
Yeah.
It's goofy.
Mr. President, Susan, the 290 came from where? For the Street-
That is, that is Neighborhood Assistance plus CDBG admin minus 10.
Okay, can you give me dollar amounts? The 290? Okay, that's, okay, all right, got you.
Plus the 195,705.
Okay.
Minus 10,000.
Okay, very good, very good.
So he's getting 43,000 more, roughly, than he requested. Because now it totals 480 when he wanted 437, so. What happened when you exceed what they requested? Would his HUD look at that? I mean-
Well, he has several things on his list, so. But what, no.
But on his list, it totaled 437, right?
For street and curb reconstruction. Now, he did submit a list that includes park improvements.
That's-
But that was-
That's general fund.
That, that request was 323,000, and there was 46,000.
Oh, park improvement, the line below, okay. I'm not looking at that, I just, because everything was supposed to move to Streets.
That's what the request was.
Yeah. I mean, I feel disadvantaged not seeing the, you know, committee report, but having sat in on the committee, I just-
Mr. President, we have another day before we can make these decisions, anyway.
Yes, another day for that.
Good discussion, Liz, but we have another day?
I have one question. Mr. President.
Councilor Glenn.
And Mr. Karate, when I first got here, and I think I've been here longer than anyone.
Not yet.
Not yet. Nixon got a little time on me. But we had three neighborhood specialists and a supervisor, okay? And went down, five years ago, went down to-
Then we went down, five years ago, we went down to two Neighborhood Specialists and Supervisor, right? Now we down to no Supervisor, one Neighborhood Specialist, because she retired. So she doing all this by herself, whole city, okay? I just want to make sure that we don't have any more Neighborhood Specialists here.
No, we have one.
Just have one, so our city downsized to one Neighborhood Specialist that we sponsor for our Neighborhoods, okay? I just want to make sure.
We haven't had any other Neighborhoods except one since I've been on council.
Well, Connie retired last year.
Yeah, she's, she's been on that Neighborhood Specialist for as long as I've been on council, which is.
Okay.
And then we've only had one.
Yeah, we have one. Does everybody else, okay, so we got another day ahead, we'll get it, that's right.
This is our last public hearing, so, so really.
Can these be final?
The discussions for the public to be able to comment are really today.
And you can't make adjustments at meeting on the 24th without holding another public hearing, correct? I'm just going to say this, I think that it is, you know, CDBG money has got so many strings attached to it. And I have a problem with eliminating the allocation for the Administration because it is one item that HUD does approve and authorize and frankly, expect you to expend because of the management of the program and the record-keeping that goes on long after programs end. So, I'll just say this, in its current form as presented tonight, I'll be voting no on it, on the 24th. Neighborhood Assistance and that, I, I believe in the Streets and everything else, but I think that, you know, once you you've got an allowable expense, and I think to charge it to CDBG funding is the appropriate way to do it. Yes, you can always supplement things like Streets with general fund when available, okay? But, I, I'm, that needs to be reinstated. And again, we don't have the committee report, I caught part of the committee meeting, and I, I just it's difficult enough to find programs and projects and expenditures that qualify for this ever-decreasing amount of funding that to offload the administrative, administrative cost to the general fund is just not doesn't sit well with me, so.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
And as far as the Administration funds for myself, I feel the same way as you do. That's not my point, I've never said a word about the Administration piece. Because I also see what has to happen, where it becomes in the law director's realm, he's got a lot of work every time that one of these things, to check these programs. I mean, it's a, it's a lot of work, there's nothing that I've ever said about the Administration cost.
Okay.
But I have an objection, we only have five working Neighborhood Associations, and we spend that kind of money administered. There, it's, we, we could.
Is, is there a number, not to cut you off, but is there a number that you have in mind, do you think is sufficient?
I think that we should share costs. I personally think that she does a good job. But for five working Neighborhood Associations, even if she has grants that are going to them, which I know she does, for certain projects that they have for Make a Difference Day, I, I know that they've got things working to give them a better chance of trying to get new people involved. We're in a different environment today, it's hard to get people to volunteer in that.
Sure.
It's very, very hard. And, and her job is very, very tough. So my objection was the amount. If we could split it to where the Administration cost is 50% in CDB, where she is working that way, there's no doubt in my mind.
Okay.
And the other half, that the general fund should take care of.
Mr. McLean, let me just get a clarification. This 104,000 is for Neighborhood Assistance projects, not salaries, correct?
It includes her salary and benefits, but that, but there's a lot more in there than just her salary and benefits as well.
Okay. What does that number need to be for salary and benefits?
And I'm sorry, I don't have that off the top of my head, but I want to say it was between 65 and 70 total for everything.
Plus, plus benefits.
That includes benefits.
70,000 is the benefits.
Total.
Total, combined, 70,000, benefits and all.
Well, then I'll make a motion to restore the allocation to the CDBG Administration and adjust the Neighborhood Assistance to the
34, 4?
We really don't know what that number needs to be. Yes? To the salary, the amount of the salary and benefits. And, did you say that there's a cap that prohibits us from adding 10,000 to Bradfield?
Yes.
Not prohibits, well, prohibits us from adding 10,000 more.
This 10,000 that's listed here?
Is okay.
Is okay, right. And reduce the allocation, okay, so here's the motion, restore the allocation for the CDBG Administration, which is what, 148,000? And restore the allocation for Neighborhood Assistance to I'm going to throw 80,000 in there, just let me finish the motion.
The allocation's only 97, so.
Yeah, no. Well, but you've got salary and benefits in there that's around 70, it leaves 10,000 for projects.
97 plus the carryover.
Okay.
And what do you want to take the allocation to?
So it is 104,000.
Take the allocation to 80. And with the estimated carryover, it's going to be 87 and change. And leave Bradfield at the 10,000 and adjust the Streets and Curb Reconstruction because they have been successful in programming between the CDBG allocation, between the gas tax, the 309 account. Pardon? And the state-issue 1 money, they've been able to use that successfully to leverage additional state and federal dollars, okay?
I see so many Streets down here.
So, it's not very clear.
Well, the 10,000's got to come from somewhere.
Yeah, we'll just adjust it off of the Street and Curbs.
Okay.
Innovation.
That's cool.
Okay.
Steve gets calculator? So that's the motion. Is there a second?
You need to clean it up, I can't, you got it all wishy-washy in my head.
Restore the allocation for Administration to a new allocation of 148,000, and they keep the estimated carryover. Do we need to mess with the carryover? I'm moving the carryovers stay with their, as Counselor Miles indicated, those have already been approved. Change the allocation for CDBG Admin back to 148,000. 80,000 for Neighborhood Assistance.
Need me to help you? 7,000, 19 dollars to Streets and 10,000 Bradfield.
How much is it?
10,000 Bradfield.
Yeah.
Which is already there.
7,000 and 19 dollars.
17,000.
17,000.
You said 80, right?
Yeah.
10 grand is going to Bradfield.
No, it's already been allocated.
It's already been allocated.
It's already listed.
That was going out of Streets, yeah.
Well.
Go ahead while we're confused, please.
No, I'm confused too, I guess.
It's, it's a wonderful state.
Because the, well, the 10,000 came out of, you know, a combined, if you're, if you're restoring CDBG Admin, then the 10,000 has to come from somewhere.
So it's come from Streets.
Took it from the Streets.
But we're using 148 versus the original 195, that has to come into play, doesn't it?
That's the carryover.
Yeah, you were considering the carryover when you allocated it?
With the carryover, so she's got 10 grand in there.
It's part of the 290. The 290 is the 195, 104 minus the 10,000.
Sorry, bring us a clean copy.
She's already got a calculator?
Ah, thank you.
Let's have it turned in later.
Mr. President?
Well, that's our left of the date, so we'll have to go up the difference, Sam.
Mr. President? As we, I just want to say, as we're working on this, in the discussion during the CDBG meeting, it was a consensus among members that we're looking to do something different. I can see all the strong opinions, and I'm not saying they're right or wrong, we are right or wrong in that committee, but the idea was to do something different, to give some money to where people are really asking for. I'm not saying that our Neighborhood Specialist doesn't need all this assistance. I have been a part of Neighborhood Association for quite some time. I know what she does, I know what we all do as Neighborhood Associations. I just would like to say, the idea was to do something different. Now, if our committee isn't strong enough to do something different this time, that's okay. I just want to put that in place. I did take notes of Mr. Cleve's points, we've talked about this, we've had several meetings, and that's why one of our committee members wanted to have another meeting to just to give it one more conversation, but that is all, thank you.
You did a good job, so don't worry about what they say. You did a great job, Mr. Chair. Okay, ready, roll.
Clarify these columns, okay? I, I'm sorry, but these spreadsheets are a little bit unclear. We're looking at allocations of 955,729, right? That's what it's got to add up to.
Correct, that's allocations of new money.
Yes. Okay, well, Admin was going to be 148,000, correct?
Would be the allocation, correct.
Okay.
And again, carryovers are estimated.
Basically, this, this, this column of under allocation is that the original allocation proposed?
That's what HUD told us we are getting for this plan year.
Each line, is that what was originally proposed?
Yes.
Okay.
Requested was to your other column, next to requested, 16.
Okay. Yeah.
Let me compare it to the These have, the allocations were updated, because remember also, at, in the very beginning, in the first sheet that we passed out, we were working off of estimates.
Right.
So we went back and added in amounts after.
We've got the final numbers.
We got the final numbers.
And that is what's listed here?
Let me, uh, well, it should.
What's the date of the first one, once you got the numbers?
Let me get my.
I got one from 626.
Mm-hmm. That should be.
I thought that was the.
That would not have the.
I got one from 619.
Yes, these are all the same as what was in the presentation from the June 19 meeting. So the allocations there are the same as what were proposed.
Okay.
The total includes reprogrammed funds.
Then I think what I'm, what I'm proposing then is this, I'll just go right down the list, I believe. Housing Rehab, 65,000. Police Work Programs, 45,000 and 69 dollars. Neighborhood Assistance, 80,000 dollars. Property Maintenance, 174, 225. Demolition, 100,000. Street and Curb Reconstruction, 152,602. Parks Improvements, 25,000. Career Pathways, 7,000. Fair Housing, 25,000. WOCAP, 25,200. Bradfield Center would be 66,000. Family Resource Center, 12, 633. Emergency Repairs, 30,000. Administration, 148,000.
Thank you.
Does that add up?
I have that now.
And then, I, if I may.
Were you punching those in?
I did write those down.
You said Street and Curbs were 152,000? Yeah, 602.
152, 602. Because we're changing the Bradfield to 66.
Oh, that's right, okay.
Okay, that, it was 17 difference, but it's 7 and 10.
Oh, okay, that's what the 17,000, okay, that's what I wanted to clarify. Okay, I'm on board now.
Okay.
Anybody got a real calculator?
Hey, we'll say it's right.
Yeah, let's just say we don't, so we can move on.
You can't be wrong too far.
You can't, you.
I meant it twice, I don't think you're right.
That is, that's my motion, is there a second?
Second.
The motion is second, is there any discussion?
I appreciate the discussion of all of us, patience of Susan through a lot of this. And I would just like to mention what I'd said earlier, the concerns of the committee on some other projects, I would like to see at some point, at a future council meeting, referred to the Finance Committee so that we can meet and see if we can allocate to do some of that. I don't want them to think it wasn't heard and felt, but, you know, I'd like to have the discussion there where we have the general fund in front of us and the whole budget, and not just dealing with a grant. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. For the discussion, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
The next public hearing is on the tax budget for 2018. Will the clerk read the call for that?
Notice is hereby given that on the 10th day of July 2017 at 7:50 PM in Lima City Council's public hearing will be held.
I apologize. Since council has made changes, I think you have to at least have the opportunity for public comment.
Okay. All right. So, back to the CDBG. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to address the CDBG allocations, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to come forward and speak to the CDBG allocations, please come forward and state your name and address. Linda, if you're going to speak, please come forward, state your name and address.
I'm the MAC community leader, 108 East High Street, right here, block north here. It appears to me, now, I thought there's been a lot done on this, work done on this CDB, and it appears to me that something of the information is missing, clear from the top. And if this guy that is apparently at the top is trying to give somebody $10,000 more, he's saying, he's hinting you're going to need it there. He knows. But maybe he doesn't, his boss don't want him to pay that much more money out. So he can't clearly say that. So anyway, it looks to me like somebody better get hold of him. They originally brought that info in, and something is not there. So this is why you're having floundering around and doing all this. And something's not there that is very well needed. There's apparently, the whole thing at the top, there's something missing out of there. And you're coming down in further in the bottom, and it's up here at the top, and you can't make the decision because you don't have all the facts. Now, that's the way I see it. Guess that's it.
All right. Thank you, Linda. Third and final call. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to come forward and speak to the allocations for the CDBG funding? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Thank you, Mr. Geiger. And now we will do the tax budget public hearing.
Notice is hereby given that on the 10th day of July 2017 at 7:00 PM in the Lima City Council's Chambers, 50 Town Square, Lima, Ohio, a public hearing will be held upon the 2018 tax budget for the city of Lima. All interested persons desiring to speak to the budget will be given an opportunity to do so at that time. Following is the summary of the budget. General fund, 34 million, $12,356, 12, yeah, 34 million, $1,200, 356. Waterworks fund, 60 million, 799,479. Sewer disposal fund, 14 million, 129,270. Garbage and Refuge, 2 million, 767,149. Water deposit, 7 million, 222,471. Sewer improvement, 52 million, 214,962. Stormwater sewer, 2 million, 259,504. Miscellaneous fund, 19 million, 403,812. For a total of 148 million, 809,003. Copies of the entire tax budget are on file in the office of the Clerk of Council and the office of the City Auditor, Municipal Center, 50 Town Square, and the Office of Public Inspection, where we regularly work and audit.
Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to come forward and speak to the tax budget for 2018? Is there anybody in the audience for the second call who wishes to speak to the 2018 tax budget? For the third and final call, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to the 2018 tax budget? Seeing none, we'll declare that public hearing closed. Next, we have privilege of the floor. First is Tammy Colon, Cologne? Cologne, I'm sorry.
Councilman Nixon, Mayor, Council, thank you for your time this evening. I've been asked to just speak to you in regards to what we already know is a challenge in our community, which is the opiate challenge that we're experiencing. And I've been asked to share with you that the Governor's Cabinet, the Opiate Action Team, put together an action guide to address the opioid abuse in our community. And the Mental Health and Recovery Services Board, and Coleman Professional Services, and many other community partners were very pleased when we went through the seven recommendations that were made by the Governor's Cabinet that in fact we are solidly responding to six of those. This evening, I'm actually inviting you to join us in our attempt to meet the seventh recommendation, which is to establish an opportunity for community members to become aware and informed in regards to opiate abuse and addiction. So I am formally inviting each and every one of you to attend a training July 14. It's called Understanding Addiction: The Squirrel Logic. It is presented by Bran Lander, who's a PhD and the Director of Addiction Medicine at Ohio State University. It is a educational opportunity for the general public to understand addiction and the way in which people operate when they are suffering from this disease. And we are holding the event at the Lima City School, charging a very reduced amount because we want as many community members who can afford to join us to come. And for those who cannot, there's scholarship opportunities available for the community. But we felt that it would be a great opportunity for any of you to join us to show the importance and the value of learning how we need to manage this challenge in our community and how to help our community recover, which is the whole purpose in the event. So I'm just going to leave, leave some invitations with the information, if that's okay?
Right.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next is Lundell Smith.
Good evening and happy Monday. Lundell Smith is my name. 2160 West Market Street is my address. I am here to add input on the proposed electrical aggregation plan that I know the council is considering. So before I do that, I do want to say hello to Mayor Berger, President Nixon, all our council reps as well. Be remiss if I didn't give you a salute first. But at any rate, I am a senior consultant, a senior energy consultant with Ambid Energy. And we are a, a independent supplier of both natural gas, electricity, and in some markets, we're also piloting solar energy. And I'm not sure if everyone really understands what the aggregate program really means. And I'm not going to go too far into depth in terms of the history of the deregulation of energy and whatnot, but basically what happened is that the federal government decided that it is not constitutional for your major utility companies to be able to control the generation, the distributor, and the supply of energy. And by deregulating, it allowed individuals such as myself and other companies to be able to participate in the supply portion of this industry. In essence, what an aggregate would be doing is taking away some of the options, not entirely, but some of the options. And that's just what you would be asking is for a company. And if you do pass it, we plan to bid as well. But I want you to be careful, okay? Because only thing, the only area, the only line item that can be controlled is the supply portion. So if you aggregate electric, if you aggregate natural gas or any other utility, the supply portion can be offered at X rate. However, you could find a great rate for your supplier, but that has, there is no guarantee that your generation and delivery rates will be lowered, and in fact, in some cases, they can be increased. So where you think you might be saving money as a city or municipality, well, hey, we got a great supplier rate. Well, the utility companies could then say, hey, you know what? We don't really control the supply, but in terms of the generation and the distribution, we can tag, we can add on. So I know that because there's a lack of understanding, a lack of education when it comes to energy, how it is billed, how it is used, how the consumers go about selecting a supplier, there are individuals out here, such as myself, who take this very seriously. And when we heard that you're considering, in essence, a cooperative type opportunity for, for the city, we wanted to make sure that we encourage you to do your homework. I know that there are several rural communities, and even the county, has entered into such arrangements. But when you look at it and you look dollar for dollar, the savings has not been that significant. Now, I know, President Nixon, you had made mention early on that it's frustrating when you have people come door to door, or they telemarket you, or they send you mass, you know, emails or mailings, you know, so on and so forth. It gets frustrating when you say, okay, well, I can have this rate, and then at some period of time, rates have to change and whatnot, and it's, and it's tough to keep up with it if that's not your thing. However, please understand that just because it glitters when they come to your door, because it sounds good when they speak to you on the phone, or it looks good when it comes in the mail, doesn't mean that that is long-term. There's a long-term benefit. Now, I also read in the information that you received that you want to make sure that there are opt-out options, and I think that is great. However, you also have to keep in mind that in several cases, if you opt out of this energy aggregate, you could be charged a fee. You can be penalized for opting out. You can be penalized, and a lot of companies don't tell you that, okay? So when we think that we're making decisions that are in the best interest of our residents in our community, unless we do our due diligence in terms of the research and what it has to offer, what it's going to cost, the pros, the cons, good and the bad, we may not be making the best decision, you know, in the interest of our community. So, I wanted to come over here because I know that if you were to pass that today, then there's a possibility it can go on to the ballot, you know? And regardless of your decision, I believe that the public needs to be informed. We do plan to have a series of educational sessions because I believe this is something that regardless of whether the aggregate is put in place or not, the community needs to be informed in terms of how this works, how this applies, and how you can best maximize the services that you're going to use on a daily basis. So I just wanted to come in here and just tell you, hey, be careful. Do your due diligence before you pass the aggregate. Because again, a company can say, I could come and say, well, you know what? If you give me all the residents in the city of Lima, I can guarantee you this rate because I have such a large number of potential consumers. However, even if I gave you an excellent rate on the supply, I have no control over what the utility, in this particular case, American Electric Power, charges you for generation and distribution. So just because you think you might be saving, saving money in one particular area or one particular line item, you could be very well seeing an increase in other line items. So if it were me, and if I were sitting in your shoes, this would be something I really wouldn't, you know, I really wouldn't consider. I wouldn't pass it. Why? Because I believe that individual consumers, they have choices. That's why the federal government deregulated energy in the first place, so that you can have choice. Now, what you do with that choice depends on the information that you have. And then based upon the information that you have, and you're able to obtain, then you're able to make the decision that best suits you and your family or your business. So I just wanted to spend a few minutes and just share with you the importance of doing your due diligence before you make this decision. And I'll open up to any questions.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
Lundell, we have thought of all those issues. Trust me, we sat in here in a council hole and dealt with those issues all the way through. It's a matter of putting this on a ballot and letting the city dwellers decide. Now, opting out, we would not ever sign anything or approve anything if they had to be outlawed, period, okay? You're right, we cannot control the generation fee, but you can either, and any other company that we go out, that calls me on the phone and tries to sell to me can't either.
Correct.
So rate is all that we can.
Supply rate.
Correct. So supply rate is what we're going to deal with. And it's entirely, we're going to have public hearings, we're going to have plenty of informational meetings so that the public will understand this. What it's going to give is give that, maybe some freedom to someone that says, you know, I've got that do-not-call phone, that I still get calls all day long. I've already got it taken care of. Thank you very much. Okay? If they want out, no problem. So we're not trying to take anybody's business from anybody. We're just trying to get the best possible rates available for all of our constituents in the city. Now, the county's used it very similar. It's set up through the chambers of commerce. This is not a fly-by-night outfit. It's not something that we've taken this very lightly. Just wanted you to know that.
Anybody else?
Mr. President.
Counselor Dwyane.
One thing I don't like about putting it on the ballot, okay, it stinks to high heaven when you want to put it on the ballot. Reason why I'm talking so strong about it because I got had, and most of us know I'm at a lot of money right now, my elected bill. I gotta pay $300 next week to get up out of it. The guy promised us on this microphone that he's not going to do that. Same thing he told me. And I'm not going to let the people in Six Ward get hooked on this because some of the people did. And I'm not going to call no names out who brought this around here, you know? But it was terrible, and until they give me some more information, I don't think it should be on the ballot. I think it should be cut and dry. Why we got to put it on the ballot? So we can make everybody move in this city of Lima, had to go in that direction because it'd be a law here. So I think we, until they prove something different than me, like Sam was saying, we're going to look at it a little bit more. But I got, just like you just said, I got hit real pretty hard because I didn't really read everything.
Right.
And it's bad. I'm about $350 just to get up out of it.
Right.
Thank you. Good job.
Anybody else? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lundell. Next is Leela Johnson regarding parking for business. Leela, if you would give us your address for the record.
My name's Leela Johnson. I live at 511 North Kennelworth, here in Lima. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak today. I own the Boilermaker at 132 South Central. Used to be the Club Utopia. And that building has been in my family for 47-plus years. When we first opened up, there were quite a few businesses in that area, and one by one, they moved out. Now there's only three of us left, and they're newcomers, but they work on cars. One's across the street, one's right next to me. And basically what they have done since I opened up, because see, I was closed for eight years, and I've been back open going on seven years. And since I opened back up, they've basically made a car lot out of the street. They've loaded up the street with cars. There's nowhere for anybody to park. But mind you, there is a sign there that says, "No parking between the hours of 3:00 and 5:00 AM." When they first put those signs up, they enforced it. And if our customers left there too late, they got a ticket. All I'm asking, I'm not asking for any special favors, is that give those people tickets. If they really belong to somebody, which I don't believe they do. This guy goes to auctions and buys cars. He's loading up the street with cars, and when he gets a chance to work on them, he works on them. They sit out there for weeks and months. They just sit. A few of them are people that, that do belong to people, and they're working on them, but that's their racket. That's their game. They move cars through auction. And then he's got a junkyard that isn't enclosed by a fence or anything. There's rodents. I can sit in my car and see rodents running in and out of the parking lot over there. I mean, the homeless people sleep in the cars. I mean, it's a mess. And I just don't know, there's no incentive for me to try and do anything with my property when I'm looking at that. You see what I'm saying? And I don't have anything against the owners. I've talked to them. They're as nice as can be. I love them. The guy next door to me, when he shovels his snow, he shovels mine. But that still doesn't mean that I should have to put up with all that junk out there like that. And that's downtown Lima, mind you. That's the downtown parcel. So it's still downtown Lima. So why are those cars allowed to be there? So I don't know. I called the police department, talked to a desk sergeant, and he said that during those hours, they're busy, and that they can't. Well, this has been every day now for going on three or four months, maybe six months, that I don't even have a place to park sometimes. I have to park across the street or wherever I can find a place to park. My customers are saying, oh, we went by your place and you were so busy. We didn't stop. And I'm like, there wasn't nobody in there. My business is down to $20, $30 a day. It's killing it. And like I said, he's nice as can be. I have nothing against either one of the owners. They never disrespect me or anything. Anything I ask them, you know, they'll do, but they just keep loading up the cars. I just want to know, can something be done? I just want to know, can something be done? Can they write the tickets or not?
I think that it's an issue that probably isn't going to be answered for you tonight. But I will refer it to the police chief and the administration to have them contact you and come up with a remedy. If it takes legislation from us, then we're certainly open to it.
So are you wanting a junkyard there?
That's, no.
If I had a car on my lot that wasn't working...
But, Leela, we have to find an illegal way to address it, okay? Right now, as I understand it, on-street parking is public parking, okay? You can't reserve those spaces for any specific business, okay? So we need to find the right way to do it, whether it's through enforcement or legislation or designation of special parking spots. That's something we have to look at, and that's what I want them to look at.
So you don't think enforcing the sign that says the hours from 3:00 to 5:00, no parking, that would give them a, they'd have to move them then. They're there.
That is something for the police department to enforce, okay? I'm not in disagreement with you. I don't think anybody is.
But they won't. I've called them.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
Yeah, I would, I've heard a discussion similar to this. And through code enforcement, you know, and they say, well, you know, there's zone to operate that business. And there's not a lot we can do about the business property. But the city street is not zoned for that type.
Correct.
And I think, you know, law enforcement, something needs to be done.
I'm in full agreement, okay? It needs to be done, but it has to be done the right way.
Right, right.
Mr. President.
Counselor Glenn.
I just have a couple things to say, though. Because, yes, but like she say, some of these cars come from everywhere. I see the tow truck dropping them off. So the tags might not be, don't have the right tags on it. So that's what will be towed away. These ain't tags that park in a 5:00 zone or legal tags. These not legal tags parked down the streets. These cars are coming from all over. They're insurance cars. They're all pushed up everywhere. So these are legal tags. So why they can't be towed off the street? Now, if they was legal, I can see a ticket on their door. But they're legal tags that you can run it through, and they expired. They come from insurance chop shops. That's where they're coming from. Now, see why you're upset about it. You've been dealing with this for years. But make sure you stop tonight. Make them do something about it. Because you get sick and tired of them telling you over and over, they're going to do something about it. You've been there long enough. But I'm tired of talking about it. Let's be about it. Your business owner downtown for years. You made, mostly you've been there. You've been there, your parents have been there for years. You shouldn't be disrespect like that. And I'm going to talk about it, and I'm going to get, I'm going to talk to the chief about it, too. They upset me. If I drive through there and make the city look bad, look bad. You know? And then, yes, they are sleeping in the car. I took one guy out. You know, it's not fair. Now, they're going to do something about it, or they ain't going to do nothing about it. But we're going to do something about it, though. And I'm tired of it. Trust me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Next is the consent calendar.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I make a motion to receive, file, and approve Item A and receive and file Items B and C.
Second.
Motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve Item A and to receive and file Items B and C. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Communication number one.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments.
Mr. President.
Counselor Crayer.
I move that communication number one be received and filed.
Second.
Motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number two.
From downtown Lima regarding the appointment of Ken Blanchard to the Design Review Board.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that Communication number two be received and filed and approved. I didn't think you can do.
Second and approved.
I amend my motion to receive, file, and approve Communication number two.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve Communication number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number three.
From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding a transfer to Helen Ruth Investments at 122 East North Street.
Mr. President.
Counselor McLean.
I move that Communication number three be received and filed and filed with the state. Liquor Control with an objection, and that a hearing be held in our county seat.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication number three and to authorize the clerk to notify the Ohio Division of Liquor Control of council's objection to the transfer and to request a hearing in the county seat. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Counselor Glenn.
I will make no doubt we sustain you from this due to family relation.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number four.
From Chief Martin regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Reinecke Ford Lincoln of Lima.
Mr. President.
Counselor Miles.
I move that Communication number four be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication number four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number five.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for the 2017 budget amendments.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that Communication number five be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication number five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number six.
From Deputy Chief Howard regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Simole Construction of Calida Ohio.
Mr. President.
Counselor Miles.
I move that Communication number six be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication number six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number seven.
From the Director of Law regarding legislation to enter into a lease agreement with Allen County Regional Transit Authority.
Mr. President.
Counselor McLean.
I move that Communication number seven be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication number seven. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll? I'm sorry, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, let's not make this more complicated than we have. Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number eight.
From Square Fair Inc. requesting permission to hold Square Fair toast to the city.
Mr. President.
Counselor McLean.
I move that Communication number eight be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication number eight. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number nine.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Hume Supply.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that Communication number nine be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication number nine. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 10.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to enter into a contract with A&amp;B Heritage Inc., DBA, ASI Signage Innovations.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that Communication number 10 be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication number 10. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 11.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to accept two parcels of real property from Michelle 78 LLC.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that Communication number 11 be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication number 11. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 12.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation for the dedication of Road Right-of-Way.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that Communication number 12 be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication number 12. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 13.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to control special events.
Mr. President.
Counselor McLean.
I move that Communication number 13 be received and filed and put into council of the whole for further discussion.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication number 13 and refer it to council's committee of the whole. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Next, we have a petition for rezoning.
This is a rezoning and a code amendment of Chapter 1252.01 and 1240.01, petition for by Rick Mike.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that the petition be received and filed, and that the law director prepare the necessary legislation, that the clerk publication of legal ad and notify abutting property owners of public hearing to be held August 21st at 7:00 p.m.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file a petition and to authorize the clerk to notify the abutting property owners and to cause publication in the local newspaper of a public hearing to be held on August 21st at 7:00 p.m. in these chambers during our council meeting. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
And by may.
Quick, make it quick. This is a building that's on the end of Main Street that's had many, many uses. We've used it, had issues in the past. But I think by changing this and with the wording that we see, it's going to control car washes across and detail places across the city, to be zoned right and proper before they can open a business. So this is a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Next, reports of officials.
It's the Law Department Annual Report.
Mr. President. Counselor McLean.
I make a motion that we receive, file, and approve the Law Department's annual report.
Second.
Not after being read?
No, I don't want you to read well. I had to give him a break.
The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve the Law Department Annual Report as presented by Law Director Tony Geiger. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Ordinance 14517.
Levying special assessments for property maintenance code charges on premises in the city of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Counselor Crayer.
I move that Ordinance 14517 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 14517 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe. Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Ordinance 14517 has been passed on its first reading by a 7-0 vote. Ordinance 14617.
Adopting the tax budget for the 2018 fiscal year for the city of Lima.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that Ordinance 146-17 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 14617 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe. Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 14617 has been passed on its first reading by a 7-0 vote. Ordinance 14717.
Providing for the issuance and sale of $99,200 of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the property owner's portion in anticipation of the levying collection of special assessments of the cost of constructing sidewalks at various locations in the city, together with all necessary pertinences thereto in the manner provided in Resolution Number 816 and Ordinance Number 317.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move we accept and approve the Fiscal Officer's Certificate.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to accept and approve the Fiscal Officer's Certificate. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that Ordinance 147-17 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 14717 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe. Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 14717 has been passed on its first reading by a 7-0 vote. Ordinance 14817.
Providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $79,520 for the purpose of paying the property owner's portion in anticipation of the levy and collection of special assessments of the cost of constructing sidewalks at various locations in the city, together with all necessary pertinences thereto in the manner provided in Resolution 715 and Ordinance 5316, and for reimbursement of the city for expenditures made by the city relating to the payment of the principal amount due on the 2016 note.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that we accept and approve the Fiscal Officer's Certificate.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to accept and approve the Fiscal Officer's Certificate. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we, that Ordinance Number 148-17 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 14817 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe. Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 14817 has been passed on its first reading by a 7-0 vote. Ordinance 14717. I'm sorry, 14917.
Authorizing the mayor to grant an easement to the Indiana and Ohio Railway Company.
Mr. President.
Counselor McLean.
I move that Ordinance 14917 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 14917 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe. Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 14917 has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. Ordinance 15017.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Reinecke Ford Lincoln of Lima for the purchase of two vehicles for the police department.
Mr. President.
Counselor Miles.
I move that Ordinance Number 151... 150-17 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 15017 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe. Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 15017 has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. Ordinance 15117.
Authorizing the mayor to accept two parcels of real property from Michelle 78 LLC for the Lima Stadium Project.
Mr. President.
Counselor McLean.
I move that Ordinance 15117 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 15117 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe. Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 15117 has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. Ordinance 15217.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with Allen County Regional Transit Authority for the rental of office space for the Law Department, Civil and Criminal Divisions, and the Civil Service Board.
Mr. President.
Counselor McLean.
I move that Ordinance 15217 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 15217 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe. Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 15217 has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. Ordinance 15317.
Authorizing and directing the question of whether to establish a governmental electricity aggregation program with opt-out provisions pursuant to Section 4928.20 of the Ohio Vice Code be submitted to the electors of the City of Lima, Ohio at the November 7th, 2017, general election.
Mr. President.
Counselor McLean.
I move that Ordinance 15317 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 15317 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe. Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 15317 has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. Ordinance 15417.
Amending 2017 annual budget.
Mr. President. Thank you. I move that Ordinance 154-17 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 15417 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe. Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.